Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming to Town Meeting 2019. First, I'd ask if you'd all stand and we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Start that line. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its liberty, its borders, its citizens, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a few pieces of business that are very much traditional at Town Meeting that we want to take care of first before we get to the articles. First, I want to very much thank the Masons who are in the back and call some attention to Vermont Coffee, who's donated coffee, and Mary Bingham, who's made the donuts back there. Everyone is welcome to go back when you wish. Normally, we have a break because of school board meeting, but there's no school board meeting anymore. And so if you're thirsty, if you want one of those delicious donuts, feel free to get up, just be quiet and discreet and have as much as you want. I'm sure the Masons would appreciate that and enjoy. Now, I'd like to move to where we will hear a brief discussion from the representatives. And maybe Senator, he called, said he was coming. He's not here at the moment. And so we can learn a little bit more about what's going on in Montpelier, especially as it might relate to you all. And Mari, you'll have a mic here. Why don't you go ahead first?
Sean's feedback in the...
Yeah. You can't hear me?
Sean's working on it.
You're working on it, okay. Sorry. Modern technology at its best. We'll figure it out.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
No.
Good evening. Welcome to Town Hall. I think it's a rite of spring, as is how joyful it is now to step out in the morning at six or six-thirty and have it be starting to get light and the birds are singing different songs. And then Town Meeting. I'm so proud of Vermont for this rite of democracy in action. And I'm also grateful and honored to, with Caleb, represent you in the State House. Thank you to the Select Board. Thank you to the moderator and to everyone else that helped out here. Senator Bray just walked in. Did you want to let him go? Okay, I have the mic. I do want to let you know that I love what I do. I'm so happy to be there. It's a lot of work, but I wouldn't have it any other way. The only issue I have is when I'm in my nursing work, I'm walking or running twelve and a half hours a day. In the State House, we do a lot of sitting, but it's really good work. I'm on the House Healthcare Committee, which was my first choice as a registered nurse. And we are doing a lot of work to try to stabilize the health insurance market, which is being destabilized by actions at the federal level. So we're playing a kind of whack-a-mole and creating legislation that will protect Vermonters from prices going up and from losing protections like a ban on pre-existing conditions and using those to deny coverage. We're also taking a lot of testimony around mental health care and strengthening our mental health care system, especially the peer organizations and other service organizations that do such great work in our community. Lastly, even though I'm not in energy or technology or in natural resources, most of my time is spent in the Healthcare Committee. Caleb and I both are working on climate change and environmental issues. And I'd love to hear more from you. I've loved every time, whether we agree or not. I love it when you reach out to me and I will get back to you. So go to mariportis.org or find Caleb's and my contact information on this report. I don't have enough. It was such a popular document, this legislative report, that we don't have enough for everyone. But please pass it around and know that if you have access to the Internet, I will be posting it on my website and on social media and I can email it to you. So if you'd help by passing this out, keeping one if you don't intend to use the Internet, otherwise I have to nail it off. Again, thank you for having me as your representative. I will continue to work hard for you and I look forward to hearing from you.
Better? Yes, thank you. Okay. Sure, Caleb. What...I forgot to do this. I'm supposed to do this. No one has any objection from residents that people that don't live here in Bristol are speaking to us, especially our state reps, do you? Good. That's official. Go ahead, Caleb.
Glad to have that taken care of. Thanks for having me here at the Bristol Town Meeting. Happy to be back. I was saying to Fred before we started, I did have many years in Bristol, but not voting age. And then just really one after high school, I lived back here and worked at the elementary school and attended the Bristol Town Meeting. So that was well over ten years ago now. So very happy to be back and thanks for having me in this capacity. Since getting to Montpelier, I was put on the Education Committee. I am on our local Mount Abraham Unified School District Board as well. So that connection is nice. I appreciate having a new perspective on education issues from the state level and being able to speak with the Secretary of the Area of Education and the head of the Vermont Superintendent's Association for two examples. Those are good opportunities because I've got questions for those people after a number of years on our local board. Hopefully constructive questions. So that's been a really good experience and I have been digging into that work. The first half of the session has a lot of committee work. I'm looking forward to the second half of the session. You get your crossover. So we're now having some bills that come to our committee that have been passed by the Senate. So that's a new part of the process I'm learning about. And throughout the whole year, I'm really trying to make myself available to you and accountable to your questions and needs as constituents. So please do reach out. Mari did pass out this piece of paper with some notes from the session, but I'm also doing a couple other things. My website, which is just mynamecalebelder.com. I've got the Legislative Weekly, where I'm publishing around 500 words or so every week that looks at some committee issues and some things out of committee, just kind of what's front of mind in the State House. It's not an all-inclusive list, but sort of just a weekly check-in. So if you can subscribe to that, get an email each week or just see it on my website. And I also post it weekly to my representative site on Facebook. And then Mari and I have had a monthly meeting. We had one in Bristol. We just had another one in Starksville. And this month, we'll have one in Moncton and next month in Lincoln. And those are just monthly opportunities to meet with all of you in the district. So we're building that capacity to serve you well. And I'm sure that, you know, we're in the... I'm in the course of a learning curve, so I hope it'll get better. And then it's okay now, but it will continue to get better with your help. Please do reach out. On that sheet of paper is my direct cellphone number as well as my legislative email. I'm happy to hear from you in any way that it works for you. So happy Town Meeting day and thanks so much for having me.
And I've served eleven years in legislature. This is my seventh here in the Senate and it's an honor and privilege to do that work. I love the work and thank you for giving me the chance to keep on doing that work over in Montpelier. In the Senate, you serve on two committees. My morning committee, I chair Natural Resources and Energy. In the afternoon, I'm on Government Operations. So I am your employee. Whether you vote for me or not, I try to do my best to give a good service. And so I feel like I'm really here to sort of get my... Turn in my timesheet. What have I been doing since I got back? By the numbers, I've either sponsored or co-sponsored twenty bills. Two of those are already over to the House. Another six are up for action the week we get back. So we've been doing a lot of work getting ready and now bills are starting to move through the process. So what kind of work am I focused on? If I step back and look at what's the point of this work from my point of view, it's that we all know the Constitution starts with "light, liberty, pursuit of happiness." And then it goes on from there as we put conditions. And what do we mean by liberty? We're not doing just everything for ourselves. Our state motto, that's just the great state motto, "freedom and unity." There are all the unity things. Well, so roads, bridges, hospitals, schools, health, safety. And for me, on the Natural Resources Energy Committee, I look at the safety work and the health work as clean water and clean air. If you don't have those, then we can't... Then all our health is in jeopardy. So we've been doing a lot of work on clean water this session. And that includes continuing to grow and develop the Clean Water Act that we passed in 2015. The sad truth is that water quality across the state has been declining for years. We are undertaking the largest infrastructure investment in the state's history, roughly three billion in private and public dollars over the next twenty years to turn that around and go back to having safer, cleaner water for, whether it's for fishing, recreation, and drinking. So that's at the large scale. Then on a more focused level, we're looking at a few problems. For instance, you may recall that three years ago, PFOA, a carcinogenic cancer-causing chemical, was found in water in 250-plus wells down in Bennings. And how PFOA and its cousins are more widely present in the state than we thought. We want to figure out where is it and then figure out the ways to protect Vermonters from those exposures. It should be that you... If there's another example of what government can do for us, it should be that you have to look for and test yourself for invisible, tasteless chemicals that you probably never heard of until, you know, the last year or two. So that's a perfect role for government to step in and try to do protective things and help everyone in the state. So we're working at building up water quality standards for not just well water, but also for surface waters and also for public water supplies. And that bill is coming to the floor the week we get back. And then on a smaller level, same issue. Turns out when we did a pilot study testing water quality in schools around the state fifteen last year, we found lead in all fifteen schools. Sometimes in a single tap, sometimes more broadly. Well, lead is a well-known neurotoxin. It causes brain damage, could be direct about it, and it's permanent damage. So there's...No one would ever want to put our children, faculty, staff in harm's way in school waters. We should count on that being clean water. So we're doing...We pushed a bill through sort of really double time to do clean water testing every school around the state. And then the state will help local school systems take remedial steps to clean that water up. And I'll stop there. I know I've interrupted your Town Meeting, but for me, again, it's like things we can do together that we can't do well for ourselves and increase a clean, healthy environment. Thank you for the opportunity to work on that.
Thank you to our senators and representatives. If you have questions, they may be in the back and they certainly gave you ways to communicate with them in the future. I encourage you to do that. The next piece of business we want to cover has to do with schools. We've had a Bristol school meeting here, Town Meeting, forever. And we don't anymore. We now have a district. Why Mount Abraham District, I think they call it. And the meeting, I think, was last week. In fact, I know it was last week. I thought, and school board members also thought, it might be good. Maybe this will be something we do indefinitely. Certainly, maybe for a little bit. We might hear from one of the Bristol-elected school board members to the district just to give us a view from 30,000 feet concerning what's going on in Bristol Elementary, perhaps. Or maybe a little information on the budget. I'm not sure what Bristol will speak to. But I thought that might be a good thing for about five, six minutes to do as well before we get started on the agenda. I would encourage you next year to go to your school board meeting. As I understand it, thirty people went or something like that. Something that is millions and millions of dollars and impacts all our young people. So there won't be a school board meeting, a Town Meeting, in any of the five towns anymore. It's going to be, I think, probably at Mount Abrahams. And it'll be one meeting, but it's certainly germane in terms of asking questions about your local schools and what's going on. So I hope next year there'll be more folks that might choose to go. Your five school board members are, just so that you know, Erin Lathrow, Liz Sayer, Allison Sterdomin, Kevin Hanson, and Kristin Seringo. And I believe it's Krista that's going to just speak briefly. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'll see some gentleman in there for support. So thank you first to the moderator and to the Select Board for allowing us a chance to just take a few minutes at Town Meeting since we haven't had or we won't have any of our annual school board meeting here tonight. First, we'd also like to say thank you to the community of all for their support over the past year and in many years past in support of our schools. Thank you from the board, the administrators, the staff, and the students. It is with this support that we feel we can work toward developing the future of education in our district. So we're really grateful for that. So as Mr. Vazir mentioned, we had our annual meeting last Tuesday. For those that were not able to attend, we wanted to share a few highlights. And I'd also like to point out that in the annual report, it looks like this. There are some highlights specific to the Bristol Elementary School that our principal, Kevin Robinson, put together. He's in his third year at Bristol. And there's some great things happening at the school. You know, lots of folks are involved in volunteering and teaching in the school, so you might be aware of those things. But in the annual report, it also covers some of those highlights. But tomorrow, like last year, the budget that we will be voting on is for all five of our elementary schools as well as for Mount Abrahams or middle and high school. Unlike last year, we also will be voting on Article 10, which is to establish a capital reserve fund. So the fiscal year ending in eighteen gave us a fund balance that was larger than usual, somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 million. And the board is recommending that we take a portion of that surplus and establish a capital reserve fund, which we think is a really important thing to do. It's something that was established in Bristol Elementary School, for example, and some of our other schools. And it's a way to set aside funds for improvement at operating grading of our buildings as well as to deal with any unforeseen facilities expenses, like some of the ones we've been seeing at Mount Abrahams recently. So in addition to Article 10, you'll also be voting on Article 11, which is the budget. In the budget development process, the board reached out to the community for input on priorities. And we did this both in a community forum in October, that was here at Holly Hall, as well as in a survey that was electronic. And both of those opportunities generated about 500 or so responses from folks. And it's with those priorities and those reflected by the board, which include our desire not to make any reductions in staff, that we developed the budget that we're presenting to you that you'll be voting on tomorrow. So let's see if I can manage my papers here. So hopefully, you received in the mail this flyer. And actually, I left that one. Okay, so on the flyer, you'll see a little bit more of an explanation about Article 10, the capital improvement fund, as well as Article 11, the budget. And the budget does show a 6.6% increase in spending. And that amounts to an 8.17% increase in spending for equalized people. And that is a significant increase. A lot of that is due to declining enrollment. Some of that is due to increases in healthcare costs. Some of that is due to unanticipated intensive special education needs. If you though look at the longer view and you compare this budget to the budget from 2017 to 2018, you see that the increase is actually only about two and a half, 2.75%. So that's due to the work that was done last year to contain the costs. So if you look at the average of the past few years, the board and the administration has been doing a pretty good job of keeping costs contained and has about an average of 1.5% increase. The flyer shows you what that large number looks like for you personally. So you can see what that will look like in your property tax rates. And for a lot of folks, that number will be adjusted down because if you qualify for an income sensitivity adjustment, which I think impacts about two-thirds of all Vermonters, then you will see it in even larger than you see here. But this really gives you a sense of exactly what it will look like for you. I think that most important thing, though, to take away is that we are clearly at a critical juncture in education in our community. We have to think hard about how we deliver the education we think our students deserve and how we do that at a cost that taxpayers can bear. And now that we're consolidated board, we've been talking about this a lot and trying to, well, not trying, we have made a commitment to better engage the community in this work because we feel that that's not the kind of work we can do alone. And it really needs to be informed by everybody's voices. So we are working with an experienced facilitator who's going to help us try to establish a community coalition of folks that will help us to better engage people that may not come to you, may not submit an electronic survey. So everyone's voice is really important in this process and we want to hear from people before we have to contemplate hard decisions that we might need to make. So the start of this work is going to be on March 16. That Bristol Elementary School will be holding an all-day workshop. And the goal is to begin to build a framework or establish a bridge that will better connect the schools with our community. So we'd like to invite anyone that is interested in being a part of that, please consider joining us. We will have free childcare and lunch and transportation for anyone who might need it. So you can reach out to any one of us if that's something we think you'd like to participate in. And I think that's all we have. So we will be available during the meeting and after for any questions.
Thank you, Krista, very much. At this time, I'd like to call your attention to the fact that in the beginning of the annual report, we have a photograph of a character, Larry Guy. The Select Board dedicated this year's annual report to Larry. Larry was a friend of mine, I'm sure a friend of many of yours in this room. And he made a lot of contributions to society and to the community. One thing, he served in Vietnam as a medic. Difficult job. I had a very good friend from my hometown. He was a medic that was killed. Dangerous work in Vietnam. On a lighter note, Larry was one of the co-creators of the Out-House Race, which we all enjoyed on the Fourth of July before the parade. And he made many other contributions. The Guyot family is sitting around this side towards the front. And I know Donna, Larry's bride, would like to just speak a few words. And this is a good time to do it, Donna, at this juncture, okay?
Is this good? Can you hear?
Go closer to it.
Does that matter? I used to be able to holler at my kids like... I wanted to thank Mr. Moderator for allowing me the time to speak and to these Town Officers very much for this honor. We...Larry would be...He would have been very humble, very proud. He would have been surprised. A lot of the things that he did in the community, he did involve his work, his job. He was a field director. He felt that, I think, he was more of a calling to Larry than just a job. He liked to think he was Bristol's field director. The other things he did involved his feelings for the community. He loved Bristol. He loved its people, hard, very hard-working people. Its customs, history, lots of stories. Its buildings. He was... From one thing, he thought Bristol had one of the very best fire departments in Vermont. And I have another story about that, but that'll take another time. He loved covers, staff, Drew and... Drew and Ben. And the old farts club, every one of the old farts. And he was loyal and work. He enjoyed very much going to school and speaking to the American Studies group, Rick DeSorda and Melanie Stiltsbackus. Had four, five of them come for years and talk about their Vietnam experiences. He took a lot of pride in that and I think they were all therapists for each other. He enjoyed that very much. Probably the most...The thing that he had the most fun with was the annual great Bristol Out-House Race. He loved it. He was up far earlier than he should have. And he involved in that. And Larry was a happy man. He lived and worked here in Bristol for forty years. And I think a lot of this happiness was because he loved all of you. He thought a great deal of Bristol. So on behalf of our family, thank you again very much. We're really thrilled and very humble. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator.
We have three young men that are helping us out with microphones today. We've got Ross Carr, Ryan Lathrow, and Josh Sherman. When you rise to speak, please just wait a second. Someone will get you a mic so we can all hear. I think that's a good thing. And I wish you'd give these gentlemen a round of applause for donating their money. They could have gone to Barry to see the girls play in the semi-annual championship today, but they came here. That's a good thing. My job as your moderator is to have an orderly and polite Town Meeting and keep discussions to the questions at hand. And for me to always joyfully remember, it's not my will to be done, it's yours. There's a process that Town Meeting goes under, Robert's Rules of Order. State law trumps Robert's rules, but in most instances, Robert's rules. And I wanted to just go over just a few of the ones that we use most commonly, especially might be helpful to those of you that this is your first meeting or maybe just your second. My job is to preserve order. And the way we do that most effectively is when you have a question, The way we do that most effectively is when you have a question, a comment, you direct it at me, not at someone across the room or looking out to the assembly. All comments should be directed to the moderator. That keeps the peace always. And the last thing we want is not to have the peace. You also can raise a point of order if you think I've conducted something incorrectly. You probably would be right and I'll correct it. If I disagree, there's a process to go through to adjudicate that. But you can challenge me if you think I, I missed something. State law prohibits consideration of articles or subjects that aren't one. So we have to stick to our knitting with the articles always and subsequent amendments that might be made to those articles. We vote three different ways. The most common is voice vote. Usually that's all that's necessary. However, one of you or myself can call for a division of the House as long as two-thirds of the folks thinks that should be done. Then, then we'll have a stand count so that if it's a close vote, you know, we can make sure what, what the right, the right decision is on that. And you can also call for a paper ballot. Seven voters can do that and that's a secret ballot. And Ordis Civil Authority members would come up and help with that. Not used often, but it's something that you can do if you wish. I always let the maker of a motion speak first if they wish. Someone who speaks on an issue can speak twice. And the second time, I'll allow them to speak after everyone in the Assembly that wants to speak to the article speaks. So we, we give everyone a chance. I think that's, that's good, good stuff. No personal attacks. An article may have only one amendment. And an amendment may only have one amendment, certainly at a time. That's where it gets confusing sometimes for the moderator with those amendments. And someone can stop debate by calling a question. I have to recognize you, you can't just shout out and do it. It has to be recognized. And as long as two-thirds of you think that's a good idea, we'll go to a vote. And there will be no more debate if calling the question is passed. Once again, I just request very much that you address everything to me. I think that'll make things go smoothly. Our panelists up here, so to speak, are your select board and the town administrator. On the far left, we have Michelle Pearlie, then Peker Heffernan, Joel Bouvier, Ted Lyles, your, your chair, Peter Coffey. And we have Valerie Capels, Capels, excuse me. Valerie's the administrator. She lives over the side, other side of the mountain in either Warren or Waitsfield. I, I hope none of you would have an objection to her answering questions. She certainly probably is in a good position to answer them. So seeing no objections, we'll let her talk. And Jen Myers, on my right, is your town clerk and treasurer. And when you, when you make a motion, whatever, we want to make sure we get your name so that the record is clear. Okay, we're off and running. The legal voters of the town of Bristol are hereby warned and notified to meet at Holly Hall in said Bristol on Monday, March 4th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Said meeting to be recessed at the close of all business, to be transacted from the floor to the following day, Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, for voting by Australian ballot between the hours of 7:00 AM, when the polls open, to 7:00 PM, what time the polls will close. And this is for the election of officers and voting on those articles so noted. Article one, to hear the reports of the town officers. Do I have someone to move that?
I move, we accept them.
Do I have a second? A second, there you go. This article basically deals with all the reports that are in here. If you have a question on any of these reports and you noticed a typo, now's the time to speak up. We will only conduct business per the articles moving forward and there may be something in here that caught your interest. This is the time to talk about any of those reports. Do we, can, yes? Do I speak? Here's the microphone.
My name's Ken Weston. If you go to page seven, I noticed that in the list of volunteer organizations in town that are always looking for new members, for some reason, the Bristol band was left out. And we're always looking for new members, so if you folks have an old one, it's been in your closet somewhere, you're welcome to join. We have between 40 and 50 members now. And a year from this spring, we'll be starting our 150th celebration of our 150th birthday. I just want to make sure that we were recognized somewhere in the book.
Cool. Anyone else have a, yes?
Thank you. I have a few notes and I have a copy of the notes to give to the select board also.
10 minutes is the maximum I have time here.
Robert's rules. Did I ask you to think this up there? Well, I don't intend to take all 10 minutes. In fact, I, I've pruned this very carefully. And I largely do because I'm not so sure of the helpfulness of any of this. And I only do it to try to be helpful to us as a community, of course. Last year, I asked the, at this town meeting for action on two items. And I reiterate my suggestions of last year. One, that we try to find a method to improve the democratic process of town meeting, which I see as deteriorating over the years, not just in this town, of course. And two, that you research a method, a method for more equitably funding the Bristol Police Department. Regarding our town report reported this year, I see on page 26 that our financial audit of the year ended on June 30th of the past year wasn't complete or received by the time this report was printed. And I'd like to suggest that we try as hard as we can, and perhaps harder than we have, to have our hired auditor prepare the report so that it's complete for this annual town meeting. How do you say it? In, in another world, it might function better. We'd say if we didn't have the report, we could hardly have the meeting. I'd like to thank the town select board and town administrator for their annual narrative report, a fuller report than we've ever seen before and, and one that I appreciate and I think we all should. Regarding the items in that report, I'd like to ask, one, the total cost of the West Street project and where that figure can be found in our annual report. And I would also like to ask what procedures were involved in the unionization of the police department? What procedures involved in the unionization of the police department? Both of those are from the select board annual report. Oh, and I actually meant to mention first, I haven't come near the 10 minutes yet, I know it, Fred. In a town meeting like this, we probably should remember Penny Sherwood, our town clerk and treasurer for many years, who helped us in many ways. We could find some arguments with her or I could sometimes. But she was a fine example of a person working hard for her community and she died this I wouldn't be surprised if, if others mentioned this later or had a way to say this, maybe the select board did too, I don't know. So I wish to, let's see. Oh, and I forgot to write on the, the typed notes, but I've tried to put an asterisk in there for you as a select board. I note that the revolving loan fund, on page 72, is, has provided a good, a good narrative report and I appreciate that. But I'd like to see the report even fuller. I believe I've mentioned this in the past also, as I believe that an accounting of the, the funds that are used by user should be in the report. Typically, we say that that's, we like to keep it private. I think that's not the correct answer for the use of public funds and I encourage us to put that in, in the future, an accounting of where our funds are used. Let's see. I'm not sure how effective and helpful I can be at town meeting, but I'm glad to give it a try. And I thank you for your parts also, that I mean the select board and us here also. And select board, I'm awaiting your answers to these few questions. There are six of them, I think. And now I'll let other citizens participate and thank you again.
Do you want those answers now, if they had them, or would you prefer just to have them post?
Well, I think the question is more for the select board than me, but I, but a full discussion would be nice if we think we can spare the time.
I can quickly, final cost of the West Street project, not there yet.
Is that, is that, is it on? That one has a select bid.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. Are we good now?
We're getting closer.
We're getting closer.
Okay, the final cost of the West Street project was $897,812. As far as the police union is concerned, we had a request from the police department to do that and we found out that we had no choice but to allow them to move forward with that. And Valerie and Tedis, our select board representative, have been working with the union to get all that contract squared away and that's still in process. And the revolving loan fund, if you go into, probably once every three months, the select board gets that in our packet and all that information is available online. Valerie puts that online for the public to see so that those numbers that you're looking for and who the people are, are all on there by.
Just to follow up, so I suggest that be published in the annual report, is what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, understood. I only have three questions. You said you had six, so.
Some of them were comments about the democratic process.
Yeah. I found the others only to be comments, Bob, instead of questions.
Let's call it good enough for now.
Okay.
Okay. Any other thing on Article one, any other talk, discussion? Seeing none, all those? Was there somebody? Yes?
Hi, John Mears. I can just use this one if it's okay. Just to reiterate a question that Bob started with, it's time that the community had a conversation about how we pay for the police district or the police function in town. Right now, as a member of the police district, anybody else who is, we pay the budget for the police. But as towns taxpayers, we also pay to take the police out of the district to do other duties. So we're paying both ways. And my understanding is under the mutual aid agreement that all surrounding, the state police and the other police forces in the, in the county and the region have, if there's a call, say somewhere outside the district, to the, to the state police, by prior agreement of mutual aid, probably our officers, unless they're engaged otherwise, are going to go too, even if it's outside the district. So the question is, for a long time, those of us who are in the district, pay the full way of the police budget. And the obvious conversation that we have to have as a town is, is that equitable? And why are we paying those of us in the district to have a police district and then paying our police to patrol outside the district and do other functions outside the district also? Doesn't seem fair and it seems like a conversation that's long overdue. So I just want to ask, the question is, when can we have that conversation? Is that something that will happen this year at the instigation of this board? Thank you.
John, I've served on the police advisory board now since I've been on board. We have had the discussion. We've done tax, what the taxes would be on homes in the town versus the village, what it would cost to go that way. Our former chief actually gave us some kind of proposed budget, what it would cost us if we went townwide. But with the appointment of a new chief, we thought Bruce's chief, Nathan's plate is pretty full right now. We've got, the board is asking for some policies and reviews of things to get us up to speed on things. And that's not off our plate. It might be a side dish right now, it's not on the main platter. But we are having that conversation about when is the time to go, to at least bring it to the voters, to vote when we go townwide. I hear what you're saying. We play for the police district and then we pay for them to go out of town. That one is all mine. I brought that to the board four or five years ago, Peker. Peker was the only one on the board when we used to play the Hudson County Sheriff's Department. $12,000 a year to patrol, five hours a month, 10 hours a month, maybe. And I kept saying, why don't we give that $12,000 revenue to our police department instead of sending it to South, Route 7, Court Street, Midway, we'll keep it to South Street in Bristol. And Bill Bryant was the one that brought it with Kevin and I and said, let's do this. This is better to keep our money, I realize that it's town taxpayers' money, but we get about 10 hours a week, a month, out patrolling and we've hearing it. You know, Lower Mead Road, Upper Mead Road, Lincoln Road, Burberry, Hardscrabble Road, the speeders. So our police department goes up there, does patrol, it's not an extra. And you got an officer on and he circled the village eight, nine times a day. Goes up for half an hour, an hour on one spot and checks another spot while he's checking parks. So it is a cost out of my pocket too. I pay town taxes, but I paid town taxes for the greater and never seen the greater break my road unpunished. So I hear what you're saying, but we, we have to pay for those things. And so we are, it's not off our plate, some, whether we're going to come to the voters and go townwide or not.
Could one of you explain what the process would be so people might know if you were even to entertain this, what would be the legal process in order to have a expanded district, a townwide district or something?
I don't think we've discussed it that far. The police advisory board, like you said, I drew up what our taxes were for the last 10 years on three homes in the village and what would it cost then with going the next 10 years with a tax rate, with a budget. And I've presented it to the board as a mail. We're sitting on it until our chief, he's been six months as chief and he's got a lot on his plate.
I think, and Valerie, I think kind of confirmed it, it would be a town meeting article.
Yes, it would, definitely. It's not something.
The town would vote on an article. It could be warrants such as being Australian valid or it could be at this meeting sometime in the future. And there are multiple ways for that to happen, as I'm sure.
It could be a petition. You could petition the board to look into it too. The citizens could take it upon themselves.
I usually agree with John, but in this case, I guess I would like to say a couple things. We're really one community and there are a lot of inequities in our community and we deal with them and we all share in the cause. If I live up in the notch and still paying for sidewalks and lights here in the village, if I'm 80 years old and still paying my taxes to keep the school going, and there are all sorts of things like that that we can use as examples of where we may not be getting direct benefits, but we're sharing in our community.
Makes sense. I don't want to necessarily turn this into a debate relative to something that we're not going to discuss this evening or vote on this evening, but both good points.
Yeah, I would point out that I'm not advocating a particular position. I'm advocating to have the conversation, what are all the options? Do we need a police force? How big a police force? Should it be townwide? How does it get paid for? I think there's a lot of questions about that and, that we should have as a community. And there might be several options that we could consider that might be attractive for one or another. I'm not advocating a particular one because I don't know what they are. We just haven't had the conversation led by the select board in, for many years, some of us have been asking for that.
Anyone else? Now seeing no hands. All those in favor of Article one, to hear the reports of the town officers, please say aye. Those in opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, Article One's passed. Article Two, to elect town officers by Australian ballot. Of course, that happens tomorrow between seven and seven. Candidates that run are permitted to say a few words, not politic, but maybe just a little introduction if they wish. They don't, they don't, they are required to. Please identify yourself.
Hello. Short word. Uh, my name is Ian Almison, I'm running for Bristol Select Board for a three-year term. There's been a lot of stuff on Frontiers Forum about me, so I won't be able to talk about, too much about myself. I'm a director of Bristol Core, have been for three and a half years. I've lived here for twelve years with my wife, I have a two-year-old son. Uh, I serve as the Chair of the Energy Committee, I'm also on.
Fight of order, this isn't a campaign, uh, kind of.
The Robert's Rules permits people that are running for office to take a brief moment to speak about their effort. There's a, there's a, there's a fine line between whether it's a campaign and listing items, and perhaps having people speak a little bit about themselves. And, uh, I guess it's a judgment call. I would ask that anyone who wants to speak to this would try to limit it as much as possible to just a little bit about themselves, rather than, rather than going on about a lengthy campaign process. This hasn't been done before, but I learned, not too much, we did it, I think, a few years ago. I learned about this at the, at the seminar that I go to that the Leagues and Cities and Towns put on. It's come up a few times. And it is permissible, um, under Robert's Rules and Town Meeting Rules, to have a little discussion, even though it's an Australian ballot thing, and not discussion, comment. But, but everyone has more or less been guided to have it be brief and to the point. So Ian, if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'll stop talking about myself, and I'll just, uh, I'd like to thank all the volunteers on the boards and committees and commissions for the town. I'd also like to thank the town administrators, Jen, Sharon, and Valerie. And I'd also like to thank the Select Board for the work they've done last year. I've attended almost every meeting, uh, and I know it's a long, uh, hard job to do. And I'd like to thank you for the work that you put in. It's very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I, uh, actually wrote my, uh, brief presentation down so that I would stay on task and stay brief. Uh, my name is Ted Lyles, and I am running, uh, for reelection to Bristol's Select Board. I've truly enjoyed my opportunity to serve on the Select Board. And if reelected, I will use the same energy, dedication, and perseverance that I employed in my previous term to make Bristol not only a good place to live, but to always try to make it a better place to live. These personal qualities, energy, dedication, and perseverance, are the same ones I bring to the Bristol Historical Society, to the Bristol Fourth of July Celebration that I've been intimately involved in for over thirty years. Meals on Wheels, the, uh, the Victionary Project, and many other efforts, projects, committees, and events that I find myself involved with and have found myself involved with over the past forty years. Um, in my effort to, um, for the benefit of our town. So, um, I thank you very much, and, um, good luck to everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, I think it's more or less, uh, just protocol, but, uh, those in favor of moving Article Two forward so that we can elect the officers, please say aye. I know what would happen if there were none opposed. I don't think it would be necessarily legal, I think we'd do it anyway, wouldn't it? I wonder, I've always wondered why it was an article. Article Three, will the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installments shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of one percent per month, or a fraction thereof, for the first three months, and thereafter one and one-quarter percent per month, or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with the payment to the town treasurer of the real property taxes for the town's fiscal year period of July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand, two, twenty, being due in two equal installments on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and April fifth, two thousand and twenty, by physical delivery to the town office before midnight on that date. But that was all one sentence. Will someone move that motion?
I'll move that.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on Article Three.
Fred, you'll have, oh, I'm Chuck Richardson, I live on Elm Street. You'll have to excuse me, Fred, I never went to college, but these sentences, that many syllables long, really confuse me. Is this talking about late fees?
Yes.
Okay, if it's talking about late fees, when are we gonna get around to talking about the demographic of who's late?
Of what?
Who is late? I'm concerned that there's a lot of older people in town. I know what my tax bill is this year, and it's twice what my mortgage payment is. Which is ridiculous.
On page twenty-five of the report, there is a list, not of people, but of the addresses of folks.
I, I saw that, yeah. Does anybody have any kind of idea about the condition of who's late? And what the reasons might be? Is it that they don't care? Is it older people on social security? Not speaking for myself, of course, but, um, I'm concerned. I know several people that I do watch, and that's four around town, that are having a hard time staying in their homes. And I think it's time that we started looking at what's happening with some of these older people if they get behind on their taxes.
Okay, I think.
I know, I may be out of order, Fred.
I, I think it's germane to the article here. Uh, and Jen is our delinquent tax collector, so I think she'll do her best to give you a sense for your question.
Thank you.
Um, so, as noted before by Krista, when she spoke about the, uh, property taxes, there is the state program when you complete your income taxes each year, there is the opportunity for the, um, pre-bate, as I know it still, um, which is an income sensitivity program provided by the state of Vermont that sends money to the town directly, um, on your behalf or their behalf towards their tax bill, which is reflected in the tax bill that we mail to you annually in September. I don't know if that helps answer your question as far as necessarily who's late, but I will say, anybody that has been late and does have any difficulty, um, paying, we work together to make a payment plan that's reasonable for them to, to get back on track.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning Article Three and setting the rates concerning, uh, interest on people who are a bit late? Had a question back there. Please identify yourself.
My name is Patty Heatherly. Um, I'm wondering if it works. Does having a penalty, penalty fee work? Do you know what, understand what my question means?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess, I would say that there are the occasional people who it does certainly slip the radar, but I think there has to be, at some point, we have to, we have to decide what's late and what's not. I, I don't think we could just let this continue to roll because there would be no incentive to pay your tax on time.
So I guess the answer is yes. Yes, um, yeah, anyone else? Peter? Yeah, okay, back there.
Uh, Peter Ryan, uh, I just wanna remind you that your big tax bill, this town tax bill is a small portion, which are education back, that is very large.
Anyone else on Article Three? Right in here.
Does this work? Yeah. So I've worked on this issue for a number of years, um, and, uh, I'd say maybe ten or fifteen years ago, maybe people can help refresh my memory, but we had a much longer list of delinquencies, and our penalties were much stiffer. Um, I believe it was eight percent, if you were one day late, you paid eight percent, and plus you paid a percent and a half a month, uh, for the first six or twelve months, and then one percent thereafter. So the penalty was quite stiff. So this body, uh, the town, reduced the penalty. Um, I, I think it might be four percent now, so.
Pardon?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I, I'm going to be corrected. Um, there was an effort at any rate to reduce it. Um, but I think, uh, more than anything else, it's the staff and the work that's done, uh, uh, in the office to, uh, help people make sure that they get their pack, taxes paid on time, and our, our list of delinquencies is much shorter now than it has been in the past.
So it was actually just last year at town meeting that you all reduced the penalty to four percent. Historically, it has been eight percent. Um, so last year was the first year, so this spring will be the first year that we reduced it to four percent.
Okay. Let's get the mic connection in there.
And Chuck Richardson again. I remember what we did last year, and I was in favor of that, and I was part of that discussion. I read in our, a couple articles recently about Downton Country where the people demographics of who is delinquent, to try and decide whether it's people that just don't wanna pay, or whether it's elderly people in danger of losing their houses and stuff. And I wonder if it might not be worthwhile to start keeping track of some of that stuff. You know, I've got some older friends in town, and we all do. I, I hate to see them eating cat food and, or having to move out of their houses. I'm not saying we're not doing a good job, or that taxes shouldn't be collected. I'm saying maybe we should keep track of why people are having trouble paying. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other hands on Article Three. Will the voters of the town of Bristol vote on real property taxes payable in installments that bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of one percent per month, or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter one and one-quarter percent per month, or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with the payment to the town treasurer of the real property taxes for the town's fiscal year period of July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, being due in two equal installments on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and April fifth, two thousand and twenty, by physical delivery to the town office before midnight on that date. All those in favor of Article Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article Three is passed. Article Four, to set the salaries that shall be paid to the members of the Select Board.
I hope they understand.
I have a motion that we move Article Four with the salaries the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I need discussion on Article Four, or would someone like to know what they're paying? Probably. You guys know what you get paid? Ladies?
Five hundred dollars. And fifteen dollars a meeting.
Fifteen dollars a meeting?
And five hundred dollars.
And five hundred dollars for the year.
Big money. They're in it for the money. Oh, yeah.
So, if Article stipulates, or has been put forward, that we will pay the Select Board fifteen dollars a meeting and five hundred dollars for the year. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article Four is set the rate for the salaries of the Select Board. Article Five, will the voters authorize the use of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, general fund, undesignated fund balance, to pay the balance of the Holly Hall Acoustics loan financed through the town of Bristol's revolving loan fund for the current principal balance of twenty thousand dollars, plus any interest accrued at the current loan rate of one percent through the payoff date in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen? If you approve this article, the general fund operating budget in Article Ten will be reduced by amendment, by fifty-two hundred dollars. What's your pleasure on Article Five? Who's gonna move it?
I'll move.
Second? Okay, discussion on Article Five, or would one of the Select Board members wanna speak to that and tell people what's going on? There we go. Is that working now?
So with the undesignated, uh, fund balances, the surplus money that we've had over past years, and this is only for the two seven, two thousand and seventeen fiscal year. So we're proposing to, uh, pay off the, the loan that the town borrowed from itself through the revolving loan fund to pay for the acoustics in this building, left this microphone. And, uh... Sorry. And thus, it will lower the general budget because then that loan will be paid off.
So we're gonna pay off the loan with surplus dollars, basically. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the use of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, general fund, undesignated fund balance, to pay the balance of the Holly Hall Acoustics fund financed through the town of Bristol's revolving loan fund for the current principal balance of twenty thousand dollars, plus any interest accrued at the current loan rate of one percent through the payoff date in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen? If approved, the general fund operating budget in Article Ten would be reduced by fifty-two hundred dollars. All those in favor of Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, Article Five is passed. Article Six, will the voters authorize the use of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, general fund, undesignated fund balance, to pay the balance of the Holly Hall remodel loan finance, to pay the balance of the Holly Hall remodel loan financed with People's United Bank, with a current principal balance of thirty thousand dollars, plus any interest accrued at the current loan rate of one-point-seven percent through the payoff date in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen? If approved, the general fund operating budget in Article Ten will be reduced by ten thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Someone move the article?
I'll move that.
Do I have a second? Discussion on Article Six.
Could we have a brief answer as to why we had the, so much extra on balance at the end of the year?
A good share of it was, uh, that was the year that our town administrator left, and we were without administrative, or had interim for a short time, so we didn't have all of the benefits that we had to pay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on Article Six? Again, we're using surplus dollars to pay our funding dollars. Seeing none. Will the voters authorize the use of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, general fund, undes, undesignated fund balance, to pay the balance of the Holly Hall remodel loan finance with People's United Bank, with a current principal balance of thirty thousand dollars, plus any interest accrued in the current loan rate of one-point-seven percent through the payoff date in two, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen? If approved, the general fund operating budget in Article Ten would be reduced by ten thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. All those in favor of Article Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The ayes have it and you approved Article Six. Article Seven, will the voters authorize a transfer of fifty thousand dollars of the June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen general fund, undesignated fund balance to the capital building fund? Okay. Article Seven, we have questions on this transfer of fifty thousand to the capital building fund.
Steve Leopold, do we have any idea? Steve Leopold, do we have any idea what this fifty thousand dollars will go towards?
Any issues that we have with buildings? For example, we know we have a serious problem with one of our public works buildings where the floor is collapsing. We've got water running inside of it and even have ice in there at times. So, it's going to take some, a good deal of engineering to figure out what the problem is and total unknown how much it'll cost to repair that. And we also, Howden Hall is in need of paintings. It's in its drought year, but it's a five-year paint shop. And there's also some rotting in some window sills and stuff that need to be taken here. So, it'll be a lot more money than this.
Any other questions? In the back, please. Get the mic.
Hi, Anne Mullis. I'm just, I'm just wondering if these general fund, undesignated fund suggestions of how he's got the money, is this going to take care of the designated funds from that year?
No, we're required to keep at least five percent by statute and I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of between eighty and a hundred thousand we're going to have still in it for it. It's an emergency fund.
Any other questions? Right there with Ken.
Just a point of verification, I guess. I thought really when we were, when we started our capital fund plan, that the statutes allowed us to start a plan only if we had a plan. And it sounds like some of this money is now being used for something that comes up instantaneously and I'm not clear in my mind as to whether we can really do that or not.
The undesignated fund balance, the select board has considerable discretion about how that fund balance is ultimately used. The town does have a capital plan. It's within your town report in the different sections. It's in the process of being updated and the select board has identified the public works facility as an area that needs a lot of attention that had not been recognized previously. And the Howden Hall paint job is also something that had been recognized that is needed and has been planned.
Any other questions?
Just for information, the capital plans are down on page only eighty, twenty-nine.
Seeing no other hands? Those in favor, well, will the voters authorize a transfer of fifty thousand of the June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen general fund, undesignated fund balance to the capital building fund? Those in favor of Article Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article Seven's passed. Will the voters authorize a transfer of seventeen thousand dollars from the June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen general fund, undesignated fund balance to the capital sidewalk fund? Someone move this. Second? All right, any questions on this transfer of eight, two thousand and eighteen general fund dollars to the capital sidewalk fund? There you go. These guys got the mic to Bob.
Just wondering what sidewalk plan is for next year? Which sidewalks will be updated?
From memory, I believe the plan not including this money was to do the section of Mountain Street from Garfield to Spring and a small section of Park Street behind the park. And then, if you approve this, because this money was designated for sidewalks in that fiscal year and it did not get spent, so it will go into the following year and honestly, I don't remember right now what that is, Bob.
Is there a priority plan as far as what comes first?
The board has put together a ten-year plan, which next year will be our, in our third year of it. So, yes, there is a plan that we put together three years ago, two years ago. It's a ten-year plan. Oh, here it is. So... So, the next one is East Street on the north side, six hundred feet of East Street on the north side. If you ever walk that, it's in very bad shape. As most of them are.
Is this information available online?
No.
It will be? Okay. So, the schedule, I guess, will be online in the near future. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Kristy.
It's more of a comment.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that as a parent of a person with a physical disability, the improvements to the sidewalks are greatly appreciated and we've walked the section that relates to the West Street project, so I know that's sort of a separate to the sidewalk plan and had to be done anyway. But that particular stretch is the perfect width and smooth and easy to navigate, so I'm hopeful that future improvements will consider folks with mobility issues and the people that might want to walk with them as I'm chipping away at the sadly deteriorating sidewalks in town. Thank you.
Of course, all of our sidewalks have to meet ADA requirements, intersections and so forth, and we're increasing all of them. Most of the old ones are four feet. We're going to five feet in any new ones.
Right there. East Street has a really terrific drainage problem. Boles at the ends of the driveways and I know, I guess we're two years out for the sidewalk for East Street. I think also there's going to be a highway reconstruction at roughly the same time. Is that true?
The, that is in next year, twenty twenty.
Okay. Is there any coordination between sidewalk, highway and drainage issues? Will that be taken care of?
The surveyors for the paving have already completed their work and that has been taken into consideration and certainly, but if you approve this, then East Street, or at least six hundred feet of it, I don't think that'll do all of it, from the new part that started on the east end and came this way, will be done this summer.
Other questions? Seeing no hands, will the voters authorize a transfer of seventeen thousand dollars from June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen general fund, undesignated fund balance for the capital sidewalk fund? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and you've passed Article Nine, that's eight. Will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year highway fund operating budget in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and one dollars? A portion thereof in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the two thousand nineteen grant list, the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Someone move Article Nine. Second? Discussion on the highway budget. Betsy.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in the, in the budget listing for paving, which is zero. I don't...
Where are you, Betsy?
This is, well, it's, it's called maintenance.
Do you have a page number there anywhere?
Yes, no, no. The font is small. Page nineteen. Okay, yes, nineteen. Yeah, nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Yeah.
So, your question is?
Um, where, where is the, the figure for actual paving? There's a repave. You see, that's like item, item number six in that on the page after the salt and the chloride and it says repaving and the proposed is zero. And since there is about a four foot by five foot, looks like going into a sinkhole opposite living well. It just bumped my car today, which it didn't do yesterday, so it's going down and I'm interested whether you have any paving.
Okay. Actually, a few years ago, we, we took paving out of the highway budget and made its own capital paving budget. And if you look on Article Twelve coming up, we've raised that from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand this year, so there'll be a hundred and twenty. So, the problem was if it was in the regular budget and we didn't spend it by June thirtieth at Pike's or some of the paving companies, there's only two or three in the state of Vermont, couldn't get here by June thirtieth. You couldn't do it in August and take care of it the year before. It's money. You had to give, you had to basically give it back or use it as an undesignated fund balance. So, that's why the select board three years ago started a capital paving budget. So, paving money goes into that and we can use it, we'll use a bunch of it before June thirtieth and then we can use some more because we already got money for paving for this up till June thirtieth. Then the new year will start and we can use some of this, so.
On page twenty-nine, I think there's some more information on the capital paving budget. That's correct. In the middle of the page?
Yes.
Any other questions on, yes, Steve? Let me get the mic to Steve.
I'm on East Street too and I know that the town has come and cold patched a couple of spots in front of my house. How does the cold patch hold up as compared to the paving that we are looking forward to further down the road?
Poor and terrible. If you really want the honest answer, poor and terrible. You know, cold patch will go until the water gets underneath it and then it freezes overnight and pops it out and, you know, that creates an impound. As Peter said, that is on the states when they paved all one sixteen from Starkspur to East Midway and they kept the three, they kept the Jans Bristol and Middlebury's downtown areas, do it as one project in two thousand twenty. So, I do plan on grinding that and repaving from Lord's Prayer Rock to the top of Stoney in two thousand twenty.
We have another year to live with it.
So is, yes.
Uh, in the back. There we go. Mic's coming to you. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my wife and I live on Upper Bean Road, which is really steep.
Could you tell us who you are?
Oh, Bill Brown.
Sorry, thank you.
And I really appreciate the road crew. They're out there at five thirty in the morning and if you're ever on Upper Bean Road and it's snowing, it would give an Olympic downhill racer a good, good go.
Thank you, sir. Just, just as, I'm going to embarrass him. Our new road crew chief, Eric Cota, is sitting up in the balcony. Why don't you wave at everyone because I think he does do everything. He really sat up there too. I don't know why the ayes liked it up there. Stay out of the fray, maybe. Any other questions? Right there.
Thank you. On the highway, highway fund budget, page nineteen, I think it is, this is the second year that we've budgeted for permits and I'd like to know what that goes for. It's a three thousand dollar figure.
Do you have a place for it? Did you?
Yes, it's on page, page nineteen in the materials and services.
I'm not sure, Bob, but maybe Eric can correct me on this. Now with the new stormwater fees and stormwater runoff, if we ditch a road at Lorinach Road or any of them, we have to get a permit and pay the annual fee. I believe that's in the permitting. Is it that, Eric? Anyone?
Alan can answer that better than me.
Yes, that'll be an annual fee that's established by the state of Vermont for the municipal roads general permit and all municipalities need to pay this fee every year. And there are a number of other provisions that go along with this requirement, including additional expenses to meet the requirements of the law.
Okay. Any other questions? Concerning the highway budget. Seeing none, will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal year highway fund operating budget in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and one dollars? A portion thereof in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the two thousand nineteen grant list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes will be determined by the select board. Those in favor of Article Nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes appear to have it. Ayes have it. Article Nine is passed. Just a reminder about refreshments out back, in case any of you are hungry or thirsty. I can smoke the coffee up here. Will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of nine hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars? A portion thereof in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the two thousand nineteen grant list, the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Who will move this article? All right. Discussion on the general fund budget. Questions? Okay, Joel?
I'd like to amend that figure. From seven twenty-seven, four twenty-six to seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
I believe as a result of previous articles?
That's correct.
Where monies were transferred, the select board would like to lower the amount that is to be raised in taxes and replace the seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollar figure with a seven hundred and eleven, seven hundred and sixteen thousand? Seven eleven, seven sixteen. That is a motion to amend the article. Yes?
Does that include the expense figure?
That included, um, that included Articles Five and Six. Fifty-two hundred and ten thousand, five ten is fifty and seven ten.
So, the operating budget stays the same, but what we're raising in taxes goes down?
Correct. That's correct.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I, I need a second before we start getting into a discussion.
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you. Now, by the way.
The operating budget would be reduced by fifteen thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and ten dollars to a total expense figure of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, which would have a corresponding amount supported by taxes of seven hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
So the amendment needs to be in two figures, two places. Would you like to withdraw your amendment?
I will.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with that? Okay, now can we have a new amendment, say Article 10? Okay. Who may?
Joel? I'll make that motion. Valerie, who's that first number? Eight ninety-five, seven sixteen. I'm gonna read it.
Who's gonna second this? Okay, thank you. So Article 10 has been amended to say the voters will adopt the proposed 2019-20 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $895,716, a portion thereof, and the amount of $711,716 to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the 19 grant list of the town sufficient to raise that sum is to be determined by the Select Board. Okay, any discussion on the general fund budget as amended? Seeing none, Article 10, will the voters adopt the proposed 2019 fiscal year general fund operating budget in the amount of $895,716, a portion thereof, and the amount of $711,716 to be raised by taxes? Tax rate on the 2019 grant list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the Select Board. Those in favor of Article 10 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Article 10, as amended, is passed. Article 11, will the voters adopt the proposed 2019-20 fiscal year arts, parks, and recreation department budget in the amount of $283,863, a portion thereof, and the amount of $193,613 to be raised by taxes? The tax rate on the 2019 grant list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes will be determined by the Select Board. Who will move Article 11 on the rec department? Second? Okay, discussion on the rec department budgets. Any? Okay. The rec department budget looks satisfactory to most folks, so. With seeing no hands, will the voters adopt this budget for the arts, parks, and recreation department in the amount of $283,863, a portion thereof, and the amount of $193,613 to be raised by taxes? The tax rate of 2019 grant list of the town sufficient to raise that sum as taxes to be determined by the Select Board. Those in favor of Article 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 11 has passed. Okay. Article 12, will the voters appropriate the following sums to be placed in various town reserve fund accounts as noted? Capital building fund, thirty thousand. Capital fire equipment fund, twenty-five thousand. Capital fire vehicle fund, a hundred thousand. Capital highway equipment fund, a hundred and ten thousand. Capital road fund slash construction, forty thousand. Capital road fund paving, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Capital sidewalk fund, thirty-five thousand. Conservation fund, ten thousand. Reappraisal fund, five thousand. Technology fund, ten thousand. Our total is $490,000 to go into the town reserve fund. What's your pleasure on Article 12? Do I have someone move it? A second? Okay, discussion on Article 12. Any questions? Yes. There we go. Right there, Andy.
Anne Wallace, I would just love for you and the Select Board to talk about this, explain it to us.
I'm sure you're not ignorant, Anne. Think your point.
The purpose of these funds are so that we can continue to be very consistent with the amount of money, so hopefully we don't have to bond in the future. So whichever one of these you want to pick, I'll take the capital fire vehicle fund. The chief has put together a long-term plan on replacement of our vehicles, and they are just becoming more and more expensive. For Jen just bought a brand-new engine that costs almost $600,000. So those types of things, so hopefully we'll never have to bond for another fire truck. The money will be there as we continue to do this and put it through in the plan. So that's the same for all of these other things. As Ken mentioned earlier, we have to have a plan for these, and there are.
Here's where I'm ignorant. Is this money coming out of, this is on top of the general fund budget?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay.
It is in addition to the general fund budget. Any other questions? On Article 12. Seeing none. Is it okay if I don't read all these? Just ask your approval for the 490? Seeing no objections? Oh, yes? Okay.
My invisible friend. I have a question about the, is Adam Jackson?
Here's the mic there. There you go. Thank you.
I'd just like to know what the conservation fund is. Not that I have any objection to it, but I'd like to know.
Conservation.
You mean, what is the total in it, or what is it intended for in?
Both. That would be good.
It presently has page twenty-eight, forty-eight thousand in it, and this will be another fifty or whatever thousand it is there. And it's used for, if, like, when they bought the Fire Fuller property, to conserve that. We contributed some to that purchase. Conservation Board came to us. When the town, when the Bob Fuller property and fire property on 116 was all that mountain top, and the land was all bought by, um...
Vermont Land Trust.
Vermont Land Trust. They liked the town to have a little skin in the game, and this is where we reached through the Conservation Board, which we have an excellent, Kenny Johnson is the chair, and an excellent crew on that committee. Buy those, give our little bit, a piece of the money to help buy that piece of land.
Is that satisfactory?
So it'll stay open, conserve it for life.
Is there anyone else on the, is anyone on the Conservation Board here? Yes? Can you speak to this a little bit? Yeah, sure. Hang on a second. Identify yourself too.
I'm Richard Boytsam on the Conservation Commission. We actually have a number of projects that we're looking at right now where we will use some of that fund to leverage, as Joel was talking about, paying part along with the land conservancy and so on. Some of it is along the New Haven River Corridor to allow the New Haven River to be able to overflow its banks in a gentle and controlled way to prevent other flooding. So it's projects like that. I think it's the kind of thing that we need to have available. Sometimes these properties come up pretty quickly, and they need to be acted upon.
You know, Eagle Park on the Way to Lincoln was a conservation fund project. Any other questions? On the capital reserve fund. Seeing none. Will the voters appropriate the sums as listed below to the various reserve fund accounts as noted totaling $490,000? All those in favor of Article 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Here's Article 12, it's passed. So we moved Article 13. Will the voters appropriate the following sums in support of the organizations listed below with set amounts level funded or lowered from the prior year pursuant to 24 BSA Section 2691? I'll read this once for sure. Okay, the organizations are, and the amounts are. Addison County Restored to Justice, $1,150. Addison County Home Health and Hospice, $4,700. Addison County Humane Society, $1,000. Addison County Parent-Child Center, $4,800. Addison County Readers, $2,000. Addison County Transit Resources, $11,306. Addison County River Watch, $300. Age Well, which was formerly CBAA, $2,700. Bristol After School Kid Program, $1,275. Bristol Band, $1,200. Bristol Corps, $10,000. Bristol Family Center, $4,000. Bristol Fourth of July Committee, $6,000. Bristol Historical Society, $2,500. Bristol Little League, $2,000. Bristol Rec Club, $15,000. Bristol Rescue Squad, $13,500. Counseling Service of Addison County, $3,875. Early Services, $2,200. Hope, which is Helping Overcome Poverty Effects, $3,250. Hostess Volunteer Services, $1,200. John Graham Shelter, $1,400. Northeast Addison Television, NEET, $3,500. Open Door Clinic, $1,000. Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, $750. Vermont Adel Learning, $1,650. And Woman Save, $3,500. The total is $105,756. Will someone move this article, please? Thank you. Second? Okay. As, I just want to make note, before we ask for questions, that to make this list, all these organizations are either asking for what they asked for previously, or a lower number. There'll be subsequent articles for those that are asking for more or new. Any questions on Article 13? Okay. Steve?
On the rescue squad, I know they do a fantastic job, and I commend them for it. I have also been aware that we sometimes have Middlebury coming up because we don't have a squad ready to go on the rescue squad. And I've been on the squad, and I know how hard it is, but do we have to pay for Jans, Middlebury, or any of the other rescue squads that come to town, big squads like that, when there's a call?
Uh, yes, they do, Steve. The town does not. The Bristol Rescue Squad gets billed out of their operating budget, and they pay that. But they also have a reciprocal with the Jans and Middlebury. If they go down there, they get, also bill that.
There was another question. Anyone have a question? Yes, back there, please. There you go. He's coming around with Mike. Use that one. Okay.
There's two things on this list, Brad. Bristol Rec Club, is that $15,000 in addition to the rec they're paid?
The answer is?
That is correct.
Well, wait a minute. The recreational club is different than the recreational department? So...
The $15,000 to the Bristol Rec Club...
Is entirely different than what we voted on already, I think.
The $15,000 that's paid to them is in addition to the rec you are...
And how much rec? Do you remember, Peter, what the rec was?
I believe it's $600 a month. For the whole team.
The other one is, I'm not familiar with what this Bristol Corps thing is.
That's the Downtown Business Partnership, Bristol Downtown Business Partnership. They changed their name to Corps.
So that's a members-only type deal, or what?
Ian, can you speak to this?
Sure.
Identify yourself, Ian, in your relationship there.
My name is Ian Alvinson. I'm the executive director of Bristol Corps. Bristol Corps is a downtown group. We support the town's designation as a state program. And what that allows us to do is access grant money and also tax credits for property owners in town. We also support the community with events like Pocup Rocks and Lumen Celebration of Fire and Light, and also Chocolate Walk. And then we also work with the town to do infrastructure upgrades, like the Main Street lighting and sidewalk project that's happening this year. That's through Bristol Corps.
Any other questions on this list? Seeing none. And once again, I'll ask your indulgences not to read the whole list. I'll just read the total, if that's okay with you. Okay? Will the voters appropriate the following sums in support of the organizations listed below set amounts level funded or lowered from the prior year pursuant to 24 BSA Chapter 2691? Our total from all the organizations listed on pages two and three is $105,756. Those in favor of Article 13 as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Article 13 is passed. Someone, a motion. Second? Second, thank you. Okay. Any discussion on 14 and the Lawrence Memorial Library? Seeing none. Will the voters approve the appropriation of $140,340 for the Lawrence Memorial Library for its annual operating budget, so its sum to be raised by taxes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 14 has passed. Article 15. Will the voters appropriate $29,000 for the Bristol Cemetery Association for the purpose of maintaining Greenwood Cemetery, knowing trimming? It will keep matter in accordance with 24 BSA Chapter 2691. Will someone move Article 15? Second? Discussion concerning this appropriation for the Bristol Cemetery Association. Ken, yes?
I'm not here to speak against this vote, but it reminds me that our old town cemeteries, some of them show wear and tear over the years, and I don't think they get the attention that they should. And I would like to offer an amendment to this article. And that amendment would be to add another sentence to the existing article saying that the $3,500 listed for cemetery care in page 17 be increased by another $3,000.
Help me out again with this, Ken. You want to take the Bristol Cemetery's prolocation, and what do you want to do?
Add another, add a sentence for amendment.
Add a sentence?
Yes. And the sentence would be that we would increase the budget on page 17 for the care of town cemeteries by $3,000.
Page 17. I've been told that that's...
The present budget shows $3,500 and saying it should be increased by $3,000.
I don't think we can change the general fund budget because we passed it already, Ken. I don't think I can do that. I don't think we can do that. Understand?
Well, I don't agree, but...
Well, we moved and seconded and passed it, so I don't think we can go back. But I get your sentiment. Would anyone like to talk about the other cemeteries at all? Or can anybody talk about the other cemeteries in town, which the town's responsible for? Any sense for that?
Mr. Montrier, it's not your name to talk about the other cemeteries under this article.
You're probably right. That would be, should have done that before if we were going to do it. Food for thought for next year, Ken. Okay? Any other discussion on the Bristol Cemetery Association?
I'd like to ask for information on that.
Stand up, please.
Oh, excuse me. I'd like to ask for information... I'd like to ask for information only the amount of increase over the, uh, request and, uh, and what was voted last year.
Um, Mr. Lathif can answer that question. I think he's on the association.
The in, the increase over last year is, uh, last year was twenty-two thousand, this year it's twenty-nine. And the reason for that was we had a new contractor last year and he underbilled what he should have to. He had to spend an additional a hundred and twenty-four hours in Leavenworth, so he wanted to increase his hours this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Right there in the middle? There you go.
Oh, Randy Wilson. I'm not familiar with how the Greenwood Cemetery works, but I know in communities where I've lived in the past, they're a separate organization and much of the funding comes from money that's set aside from the purchase of plots and put into endowment to maintain the cemetery. And I'm wondering how the town is connected with Greenwood Cemetery that we're paying so much to take care of it.
Okay. Want to feel that, Don?
Well, we're basically set up the same way, but over the years, uh, we found that we just don't sell enough lots and are, because of the interest rates and so on, we're just not earning enough money to, to cover the loan costs, so they've increased significantly over the last few years. Two years ago, uh, we, our contractor retired that, that had been loaning for ten years and he'd been keeping a fairly low price. And last year, we knew that going on a new contractor, we were going to pay a significant higher price. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. On page eighty-two and eighty-three, I think there's a detailed report on the Cemetery Association, which might help. It's also my understanding, maybe a select board member can correct me, that in Vermont, uh, if a cemetery goes failing or if there's issues, the town is responsible for upkeeping the cemetery. So the town is always, I guess, the last resort. Is, that's correct, is it not? Yes, that's, that's correct. That's the law. And I think the Greenwood Cemetery has come to the town for asking for assistance. Question, we got one in the back. We'll go in the back first. There you go.
Ian Wallace, um, I'm, I'm looking at page eighty-two and talking about the other cemeteries that are in Bristol, the size.
Uh, I don't know that we can do that. Is there, is, is, but is this by the Greenwood Cemetery? Is this from the association that does this?
This is from the association report.
Okay.
And it says that the two active cemeteries in Bristol are Greenwood and, and, uh, St. Joseph. And then it said Meehan, Briggs Hill, and Varney Cemeteries are maintained by the Town of Bristol. I'm just, I'm just trying to get myself clear and also kind of referring back to what Ken Weston said, which was, it seemed that those cemeteries were needing some work. I, I'm not even aware of them, very sad to say, but, um, I, so the town, not the Cemetery Association, is responsible for those three small ones. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, and is that what the three thousand, five hundred dollars that we saw in the budget before is for from the Town of Bristol?
Yes, it is. Those cemeteries are much smaller. And, uh, as is said before, the state statute, uh, says that we have to take care of these cemeteries and, uh, I can assure you that the Cemetery Association that takes care of Greenwood does an excellent job and this board does not want to have to tackle that. Um, and, uh, that's why they're asking for more money and we're asking you to give it to them so that we don't have to deal with it.
So they have nothing to do with the Meehan, Briggs Hill, and Varney Cemeteries?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? On Article fifteen? Seeing none. "Will the voters appropriate twenty-nine thousand dollars for the Bristol Cemetery Association, in aid for the purpose of maintaining Greenwood Cemetery, mowing trimming, and a well-kept matter in accordance with twenty-four BSA, twenty-six ninety-one." Those in favor of Article fifteen stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Here Article fifteen has been approved, approved and, and move on to Article sixteen. "Will the voters renew the exemption of the Libanus Lodge, Number Forty-Seven, Mason's Lodge, for its property located at Four Elm Street, from the real estate taxes for a period of five years pursuant to thirty-two BSA, Section thirty-eight forty." Um, what's your pleasure on Article sixteen? Someone move this?
Someone will.
Okay, second? Any questions concerning Article sixteen and the exemption of the Libanus, Libanus Lodge? Right there, we got, uh, we'll start with you. Got a mic to him, please. Steve.
Steve Leopold. The Masons are a fraternal organization. I'm for their exemption. Can we make it longer than five years for not paying taxes? And is there any other associations in town that fall under that circumstance too?
Um, Stephen, there is a number of organizations. Bristol Recreation Club, the American Legion, Limous Lodge, Bristol Rescue, and statute is five years and they will come up when their time comes up. I think we did American Legion last year and the Rescue, so...
So there are many organizations, but we're limited to a maximum of five years. I think there was a question back there. Andy's? No, yes?
Well, I, I have a question.
Let's get, oh, you did.
So I'm, may I speak?
Oh, yes.
Dave Sharp. Um, I, uh, I'm not a member of the lodge, uh, but I have been involved in tax policy over the years. So these voted exemptions that we are considering tonight, um, those, that, that tax amount, whatever it is, uh, needs to be made up for by the rest of us with regard to school taxes. Um, the state mandated, uh, tax exemptions such as schools and churches, and I believe the Legion falls under that, but I, I could be incorrect about that. Um, those tax, those state mandated tax exemptions, the town does not have to make up the school portion of those taxes. So I just thought that might be helpful. And, and the limit at the state level is five years. They have to be reconsidered every five years.
Okay. More questions? Seeing none? Oh, where?
Way to the back.
Okay, there you go.
Nicole Bradley. Uh, what is the amount of that tax exemption? And is there a limit on that?
Uh, ma'am, I'm going from memory when I was in the lister's office. Um, it's appraised by the listers and then it's taxable towards that for the school tax. And I'm, I'm, well, I have been to the lister's office twelve years, so, you know, it might be a couple hundred thousand that's listed for that property. I don't know. I have to be guessing, say.
So the question was, what would the tax be? Is that what you were saying? Do any, does anyone have an idea of what the tax approximately would be if it weren't exempted? Do you know, Bob?
I don't know, but I, I do know that there is a, a listed value of the property, oh, excuse me, there is a listed value of the property in this town report.
What page?
No, I don't know what page it is. I don't think I'm best. Uh, it seemed like a high value to me. I'm not sure it was correct.
Who's found it? Page forty-three.
It's valued at four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
And is it tax exempt totally from property taxes? Okay. So for those of you who have a home worth four hundred and thirteen thousand, you know exactly what kind of break they're getting. I, I don't, I don't happen to know.
If the, if the school portion taxes, a buck twenty-five, I don't know what it is in the state. Sorry to say, my white piece does all that, but, um, but that would equal up to about five thousand, sixteen, sixty-two, fifty-one hundred and sixty-two dollars in taxes.
Question in the back, right there.
Hi there, my name's Jim Burke and I'm a member of the lodge. Been there about nine years and just a little bit of history and about what we do that makes it a pretty good, um, property to be here in Bristol. So the Masons, the, this lodge was first chartered in, uh, eighteen twenty-six, so that was a hundred and ninety-three years ago. They purchased this property on the corner of North and Elm Street, Green Church, kind of what it's known for, um, in nineteen forty-nine. And the Masons had, they dug a cellar and they built a basement, um, under it for us to serve breakfast once a month. There's a senior meal down there once a month. We have cribbage once a month, open to the public. We encourage people to come. We raise money by doing a lot of things that you've seen us do around town, selling bread dough, those kinds of things. And what do we do with that money? Well, I have been given the task. I drew the short straw. And so some of the things that we do, and, and I look back over the last five years, I just kind of picked out the big things. Um, certainly if anybody had more questions, I could go over them, but we did a large fundraiser for Lungs for Cape. That was awesome. Um, we also did a, a large fundraiser for the Lungs for Tammy Shack. Um, we purchased, uh, police body cams through fundraising. Uh, we donated to, and I'll read just the bigger ones here, Hype for Hunger, Camp to Come to, um, Have a Heart Food Shelf here in town, the Stacks for All Sports Programs. We've done really big donations there. Um, we donate Bristol Rescue Squad. Um, at Christmas time this year, we purchased five hundred dollars' worth of gift cards from Shaws to donate to needy folks. Um, we actually worked with the nurse at the high school with kind of some guidance there, who she might know needed some help. Uh, we have a warm-up children program where we buy winter clothes and donate those. Uh, we do a free cookout on the park, uh, the Ted Pylon Memorial. Uh, we serve about four hundred and fifty people average doing that. Uh, we donate to wounded warrior. Um, we, we buy a flower basket from Bristol Corps on the Main Street each year. We've, uh, let's see, we've donated money for house fires. We've used labor to, um, there was an older man on, on Liberty Street this year who got a notice from the, his insurance saying, "Your house is a little bit dilapidated. We're going to cancel you." On a Saturday, a bunch of us went over there and scraped his entire house and primed it and then on Sunday we painted it. Uh, we have an annual, um, and we have had for years, uh, college scholarship at Mount Avon. Actually, in the last five years, we doubled the amount to a thousand bucks instead of the five hundred we used to give. And there's some more stuff on here too as well. So we donate a lot of money back into the community and upkeep that building.
Thank you.
And we have a breakfast there this Sunday. You're all booked.
Any other questions on Article sixteen? Seeing none? Okay, there we go.
I'm Chuck Still. I'm a donation. I got kicked out about thirty years ago. But I happen to be the next-door neighbor to these guys. I know a lot of them. I'm really hot on your continuing this exemption. I wish you'd vote with me. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none. "Will the voters renew the exemption of the Libanus Lodge, Number Thirty-Seven, Mason's Lodge, for the property located at Four Elm Street, from real estate taxes for a period of five years pursuant to thirty-two BSA, Section thirty-eight forty." Those in favor of Article sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes appear to have it. The eyes have it. Article sixteen is passed. Article seventeen. "Will the voters appropriate fifteen hundred dollars to Turning Point Center of Addison County for the purpose of supporting its mission to assist persons, their families, and friends in recovery from substance use disorder and addictive behaviors in accordance with twenty-four BSA, Section twenty-six ninety-one." Will someone move the article? John, second? Any discussion on Article seventeen? Right, the mic's coming.
Hi, my name is Phoebe Berish and I'm on the board of the Addison County Turning Point Center. And I'd like to give you some statistics. These are statistics for Addison County. We don't break them down by town. Um, for the year two thousand and eighteen, there were nine thousand, ninety-six visits to the Turning Point Center. One thousand, five hundred and fourteen individuals visited for recovery support. There were one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six walk-in visitors. There were two hundred and thirty-eight phone calls. Eight hundred and twenty-three meetings were hosted or facilitated by the center, and that's a variety of peer-to-peer recovery meetings. Two hundred and twenty-nine referrals were made to support services. And our budget, our fiscal year operating budget is one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And I would imagine that the number of people sitting in this room tonight have friends or family members who are touched by substance abuse disorder and the Turning Point Center is a beating of hope in the county of Addison.
Mr. Burke?
Uh, I know a volunteer there who, uh, does, does wonderful things, spends a ton of time there and I just strongly support that, that program.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? "Will the voters appropriate fifteen hundred dollars to Turning Point Center of Addison County for the purpose of supporting its mission to assist persons, their families, and friends in recovery from substance use disorder and addictive behavior in accordance with twenty-four BSA, Section twenty-six ninety-one." Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes have it. Article seventeen has been passed. Article eighteen. "Will the voters appropriate fifteen hundred dollars to Habitat for Humanity of Addison County to support the provisions of affordable housing in Addison County in accordance with twenty-four BSA, Section twenty-six ninety-one." Uh, have someone moving it? Second it? Okay. Write it. Any, any questions on Article eighteen, the Habitat for Humanity request? Seeing none. "Will the voters appropriate fifteen hundred dollars to Habitat for Humanity of Addison County to support the provisions of affordable housing in Addison County in accordance with twenty-four BSA, Section twenty-six ninety-one." Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Here's that Article eighteen has also passed. Prior to nineteen, which is our last article of the day, um, if some of you would stick around at the end of the meeting to help set up for the voting tomorrow, I know Jen and others would appreciate it. Many hands makes light work. So Article nineteen. "To transact any other binding, non-binding business that may legally come before this meeting." Here's your opportunity to thank, make comments on things. We can't take any action, but the floor is yours. If you would like to speak.
For, I have a couple of things. First of all, the girls are winning twenty-three to twenty at halftime. And, and second of all, I'd like to, on behalf of the board, thank our, our former representative, David Sharp and Fred Beja for the many years of service to the legislature for Bristol. Rescue.
Any other?
May I suggest that we send a, a note to Penny Sherwood's family as a community, thanking her for her service for so many years?
Actually, Bob, I've been working with Penny's family. There is a, going to be a memorial. She is going to be buried in Lincoln on May fourth, Saturday. The service is at eleven o'clock at Lincoln United Church. We bury her at the Lincoln Cemetery next to her grandparents', and then there will be a family gathering at the Legion at one o'clock, and the whole community is invited. There will be something in the paper in late April.
For, for those of you that don't know, perhaps Penny Sherwood was a very long-time clerk, treasurer, and served, served the community very well with a wonderful sense of humor. And, and she wasn't bashful. I remember that about her. I remember that about her too. She was a great woman. And she moved to be with family some years ago, and she's no longer with us, so a lot of people have very fond memories of her. Yes?
So I'm suggesting that, that I think we should, as a, as a group here at this town meeting, send a note to the family officially saying our condolences, I guess, and our thanks. I, I don't know whether that, any of you think that's proper or not. I'm suggesting it. I think it would be a good, a good gesture.
Okay. I'll take the under advisement. Any other comments? Seeing none, I assume we moved Article nineteen and someone seconded it before we had the conversations. So I have a, someone can make a motion to adjourn it.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second it. Alrighty. Thank you, thank you all very, very much. And again, if you can stick around for two minutes to help with the chairs, the lights, I'd be appreciative.